Joining the meeting. This meeting is a town hall meeting, told really both to demonstrate the capabilities of hierarchical phase contrast tomography. And we hope you'll help formulate a bid for an ESRF hub, which will apply HIPCT to help solve key biological and biomedical challenges. My name is Professor Peter Lee. I lead the team at UCL who co-developed with Paul Tafferoa did the ESRF HIPCT. And we've applied it already to create the origins or the beginnings of a human organ atlas. And we'll explain to you what the human organ atlas is. We want to expand it from what it is now, which is mostly controls and some COVID organs, to a range of human organs in health, various diseases, and in aging as well. During the next ninety minutes or so, we'll try and keep it shorter. First of all, Emma, who's the ESRF Science Director, will describe the concept of the ESRF hub and what she'll go through. I'll then give a quick introduction to our vision for Human Organ Atlas, or HOA Hub as we call it. Then Claire Walsh will describe exactly what HIPCT is. And we'll then have Danny Yonik, a clinician, show you how it's been used so far to already give new insights into COVID-19 and long COVID. We'll then go through and cover the details of the whole hub concept and hope show how all of you might engage. We'll then go through and have a panel and open discussion to everyone on what the key goals are of the hub, your input into them, and how we can all work together to achieve them. With that, I'd like to hand over with no due to Emma Martinez-Carado, who's the ESRF Science Director. Please, Emma.
Thank you, Peter. Let me share the screen. Okay. Hello, everyone. I just want to be short. Yes, we just present the concept, why, what, and how. Basically, those are the questions. And the idea is just to, of the community access, is just to use the EBS X-ray beams, you know, that today we can run faster and shorter experiments. So what we want with the community access, bags and hubs, is just to try time-efficient user experimental cycle. So to develop an strategy for best usage of the beam time by the community, reduction of gaps, agile reaction with regular access to the ESRF beam time, I mean, from sample preparation side, proposal submission, data collection, data analysis, and finally, the publication of the results. So. Why that? Because in the last decade, we are facing a clear increase of the proposal number by year, also the number of proposal for the B tax for the, by the viewer, by the regulators. The travel expenses are increasing also, the number of samples, and finally, for sure, the data acquisition speed. So all that to say that what we want is just to get an optimal use of the beam time, reduction of costs, back exploitation of the EBS, extremely brilliant source for those who are not familiar, limit the impact on the beam time allocation panels, B tax, and maximize the excellence. So those are the regular non-proposals, you know, the standard one, long-term proposal, a structural biology-backed proposal, a structural biology rolling proposal. So we want to ask to get the new access mode to face those challenges. And basically, the idea is to take down the overhead time for project, reduction of the lengthy setup, maximize the number of samples to be screening. And the most important is the creation of scientific synergies within the community and the development of tools for data analysis and processing of the results. So. To face that, we, we propose, actually, we launched it in October, three different proposals, science-driven bag, technique-driven bag, and science hub. So the science-driven bag, they basically specify, a specific science community selects the scientifically most promising experiments, fostering collaboration, and the most effective use of the, of the beans are available. That's the case of the cultural heritage. This is a pilot project oriented to pigments, and, and, and it's very successful so far. I can't just, just mention the, the, in a single experimental session, they have been able to measure by X-ray diffraction, two hundred samples. Then we have the technique difference back, which is the entire user community of a specific technique selects the scientifically most promising experiments, fostering collaboration, pooling the community expertise and resources, and the most effective, again, use of the bean time. This is example of the ID nineteen chop bag, where a gas gum is used by multiple users, and it's running quite well in timing modes. And finally, the sign hub, where the ESRF channels a part of its resources into a science hub in selected areas of highest associated relevance, I mean, foster in collaboration, and maximizing the impact of the use of the ESRF resources. And there we have the pilot project called Battery Hub that use many beam lines, and it's quite successful so far. In terms of outcomes. So if we have to summarize the, the hub, the idea is sharing being done to make sure and foster the collaborative and sharing aspect of the hub. The decision of what experiment should be done, it should be together as consortium, you know, in a clear, coherent strategy, and the resulting data and result should be shared by the consortium. So the approval of the hub proposal is basically a commitment by the hub members to collaborate. This needs that the hub members share knowledge, technology, beam time, and also the resource prior to the publications. And with this, I thank you for your attention. That's all for my time.
Great. Thank you very much, Emma, for that really quite clear and distinct description of what an ESRF hub is. So I now like to go through and over the next five minutes, tell you, actually, I'm going to reverse the title, first of all, show you why we're using HIPCT, and then really give you an introduction into our vision for the hub and a whole hub or human organ atlas. As you'll see here, we have many people contributing, but some of the key people who have already agreed to be members in the hub are Paul Tafferoa, Claire Walsh, Max Ackerman, Danny Yonik, Stein, Alexander Bellet, Anastasia, and Bernadette. And most of those are going to join at the end as a panel, and we'll then have an open discussion on potential uses and ways to improve the hub even further. So I think this really shows why, hopefully, you want, might want to use HIPCT. On the left is an ex vivo MRI scan, three hundred fifty micron boxes of a control brain, a sixty-three-year-old male donor. In the center was HIPCT when it was developed during lockdown on BMO5, but we're now showing the results of BM eighteen, the new dedicated beam line that Paul's designed, working with UCL and many other groups. The resolution is amazing for soft tissue, clearly shows gray and white matter. We can go through now and look at also zooming into areas without biopsy. We're going from twenty-three microns to six microns, and we'll soon go down to two microns. You can see the vascularity, you can see some of the cells, like perineum cell cells. You can see now the whole vascular microvascular system. You can connect up that microvascular system zoomed in on the regions to the overall full organ connection. So really, it's quite transformational and dramatic. But we don't only cover the brain, we hope to cover all major organs. In fact, we've gone through and scanned already fifty organs to date, about twenty organs a year, and that includes lungs, brains, kidneys, hearts. In fact, all eight of these organs are all from one donor shown here, reassembled by Paul in a beautiful video. We hope to do all of the scanning of organs systematically, where a biomedical challenge is put forward, and the samples are then picked from different donors in a systematic groupings that enable hub members to use the data to solve those key biomedical challenges, all the way from neurodegenerative disease to hopefully cancer. We'll go through and hopefully then put all of those organs into the human organ atlas, including all the controls, so that the next scans don't have to redo the controls, don't have to redo that disease, could build how it all compares to the next disease that scanned. So that was really a challenge of what's possible. I guess one question is, once we scan, what do we do? And really, the first question is, is it big data? Well, this shows to date the highest resolution we've used to seventy-eight microns. On brain, we've done seven point eight microns, took twenty-four hours of that resolution, and produced uncompressed sixteen terabytes of data. We went go through, and if we look at that, that's about a terabyte an hour of final results. The actual size of the radiographs is much, much larger. At that rate, with the hub, that's just using five hundred hours per year, which is about what the allocation might be if successful. We build produce half a petabyte of data every year. So the answer is yes, we think it's big data. So what's a human organ atlas? The whole idea is a hub for human organ atlas. Well, what it is, is what we've already started, at least as our current conception of it. If you go to human dash organ dot atlas at esr dot esrf dot eu, you'll find a number of organs, all gone through scans, documented on patient information, and scanned at different resolutions, and also resumes as well for each one. We're also working with Google in the hope that we can enable this data to be explored from any device. If you go to this link, bit.ly slash hips dash CT dash Google O one, even on your phone, on Chrome on the phone, you'll be able to go through and in real time explore thirty gigabytes of data on the lobe of a COVID victim. And you'll see the incredible effect that COVID had on this lung. So all of that's really sort of a bit of background on why we're putting together the hub, the hub bid. But what's our vision? Our vision in a really succinct way is to create a synergistic interdisciplinary group exchanging ideas, best practice, physical and hardware resources, making a highly efficient pipeline for HIPCT. For autopsy, the biomedical impact. And really, we hope we can all come together to solve some of the most relevant, important global biomedical questions. And on the right-hand side, it's really showing what Emma said, it's anyone who's a member needs to share results, methods, hardware, and software amongst all the other members. So let's get on to this, some of the specific goals, which hopefully we'll be able to debate at the end, which is, first of all, what it will enable. Really, the first is, and the most important, is those scientific advances that'll help us understand biomedical challenges and hopefully solve them. The second thing we hope to do is take HIPCT, which really bridges, as Claire will show shortly, bridges between clinical CT all the way down to the cellular scale or histology. And we need to correlate up and down those scales and cross modalities of imaging as well. We hope to translate what we're doing to clinical applications. We hope to turn histology from current two D slices through to three D images. And we hope to enable groups worldwide, really train groups worldwide how to use HIPCT, and propagate it to other facilities, and even try and replicate it as best we can in laboratory sources. All of these results have to go into the Open Access HOA as a sort of foundational agreement. Really sort of spilt up, and we have this huge overall database of our organs at a morphological level, from whole organ down to the micron, which biologists and medics can use worldwide. So with that vision, I'll hand over to Claire, who will tell you a little bit about HIPCT.
Hi, everybody. Hopefully, you can hear me and you can see my screen. Okay? Indeed, not the camera. Okay. Excellent. Super. So thank you very much, Peter. I'm just going to give a little bit of background on the HIPCT techniques. Specifically, we've got quite a variety of audience here, so some of you may not be familiar with the background. Apologies for those of you who are very familiar with it already. So HIPCT is a propagation-based phase contrast local tomography technique. We scan an entire organ, for example, this brain, and we get these overview images, so the whole organ approximately twenty micron. We can then select areas of interest to zoom in on, and these can be anywhere from six to one micrometer voxels, anywhere within the organ. And you can zoom these without having to dissect the organ itself. From these very high-resolution images, we're able to extract certain, certain structures from within the organ, even down to certain types of cells. So, as I mentioned, the technique is a phase contrast technique. And by this, we mean rather than using absorption, X-ray absorption through the sample, we are using the phase shift that occurs due to small refractive indices differences within the tissue. And this, this enables us to have up to three orders of magnitude more sensitivity than an absorption contrast type of technique would. The way that this differences in refractive index are turned into contrasting via a propagation-based imaging. So for this, it's very simple. You have the source, sample, and the detector. By having a variable distance between the sample and the detector, you can enhance the interference fringes that are caused by the refractive indices differences within the sample. The further, the further away that you move the detector from the sample, the higher the sensitivity to these contrasts, the higher the sensitivity to these differences. The downside is, is that the further you increase this propagation distance, you need to have an incredibly coherent X-ray beam, or you get into just blurring effects. And this is really what was so special about the ESRF EBS and what enables HIPCT to happen there. So the ESRF EBS, the extremely brilliant source, was the upgrade to the SRF that happened in twenty twenty, and it became the first fourth generation source in the world. This increased the, reduced the spot size, the X-ray spot size, which dramatically increases the spatial coherence of the source. Therefore, we are able to increase our propagation distances, which gives us increased phase contrast sensitivity. In addition to the ESRF upgrade, which you can see here highlighted in yellow, there are over a dozen other key instrumental developments, many of them coming from the Paul Taffero's extensive paleontological work over the previous decade. And just as an example, these are some of the different enhancements that occurred. So this is a simple phase contrast image of a human kidney. Here, we are adding the phase retrieval plus what we call the attenuation protocol. And here, this is with an optimized dynamic range of the camera. So there's an awful lot of different technical advancements that kind of enables HIPCT. Onto this, we add a hierarchical imaging, and we create HIPCT. Now, more recently, HIPCT has moved on to BM eighteen, which is the beam line that was specifically designed for enabling propagation-based phase contrast of large samples, and has proven itself particularly adept for the imaging of large biological tissues. And it is a beam line with a maximum propagation distance of thirty-eight meters, and it's designed to make use of, to maximize the spatial coherency provided by the ESRF EBS. Now. In order to perform HIPCT, the samples have to be prepared in a specific way. So as you can see here, we have our sample preparation, scanning, and post-processing. So sample preparation consists of an autopsy, formal fixation, a partial dehydration through a series of ethanol, a mounting in an ethanol agar before scanning, reconstruction, selection of those small areas of interest, scanning, and then reconstructing again in this iterative fashion before we move to a data sharing and analysis. The sample preparation period takes approximately twenty days. This is primarily due to having, requiring to do a slow ethanol dehydration, to ensure we don't get shrinkage in the organs, and also we have to degas the organ. So we use a vacuum degassing or a thermal cycling technique to decrease the amount of dissolved gas in the organs, and this is to avoid bubble formation during scanning, which can sometimes occur. This is just an overview of that sample preparation. We have the organs in the top here are in a vacuum desiccator within this kind of agar ethanol mixture. And that agar ethanol mixture is really used to just physically stabilize the organ so that as they're scanned, they don't move when they're taken on and off the beam line. We can really find the positions for our higher resolution regions of interest to scan. And this process, we found is quite, takes quite a lot of practice to become good at it. And it's really important, critical to getting good images. So if you manage to do all of that correctly, and you do your organ preparation correctly, you can end up with data that looks a bit like this. This is an example of my person, sorry. So this video is made by Joseph Brunay, one of the post-docs working on the team, and it's a COVID nineteen lung. Sorry, Danny, if I'm stealing your thunder here. But this is a COVID nineteen lung, and there you can see these zoomed in regions of interest, and you can see the types of structure that we're able to get, particularly from the lung. And that we then have to try and process and analyze to extract sort of quantitative biomedical data. This particular lung had numerous regions of interest scanned on it. And you can increase the number of regions of interest that you do quite, quite substantially. The main, the main limitation on that is the amount of X-ray dose you ultimately end up putting through the sample, and the amount of time you have, and the amount of data that you're prepared to analyze afterwards, as Peter already showed. So this is just providing an overview of the HIPCT technique, the sort of nitty-gritty. But I'm going to hand over to Danny Yonik, who's going to take you through some of the applications that we've already managed to do with this. I'll stop sharing, Danny, and I'll hand across to you. Danny, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there. Everything is fine. Not to, not to worry.
Never, never.
Not to worry. Not to worry. Okay, I'm trying to scram, to share my screen again.
It's just very unlike you to fire it, Danny.
I'm really sorry. I'm trying to share my screen yet again. Okay. Can you s- I'm really sorry, guys.
No, it's okay. I've got, I've got it on my screen if you.
Okay, if you can fire it up, I would greatly appreciate that, because for some reason, it doesn't want me to. Okay.
Yep.
Um.
And let me just go to full screen.
Wonderful. Thanks very much.
You have some pink.
Now, it actually should say pathology news from the third dimension. If you would move forward, please. Thank you. Okay, our main collaborators and funding agencies skipping that. Good. Originally, when we started out looking into COVID nineteen victims back in like early twenty twenty, all we pretty much knew that there was something going on in the lung, and conventional computer tomic rate, computer tomography basically told us what everybody was seeing, like ground glass opacities and ARDS, like, you know, acute lung injury. So looking at that histologically, we found the early phase of ARDS and diffuse alveolar damage. So a little bit of Dima hemorrhage, intra-alveolar fibrin deposition, as described by Katzenstein at all, like sixty years ago, forward, please. And DAD, like, is like ARDS, the clinical term is absolutely nonspecific. And we saw the same like in the original SARS and MERS, and for example, in the flu. So that didn't really help us. So we figured we should actually address that, and at that time, we originally did. This New England Journal of Medicine paper started out our collaboration after all. Forward, please. So this is what we saw. Basically, the lung is a highly complex organ, but its basic job is oxygen in, carbon dioxide out. And when you see these highland reddish membranes there, which are something like five, six, seven times the size or thickness of an alveolar septum that tells you why patients can't breathe when they're affected by COVID nineteen. But I've been to look, but that's not the end of the story, nor was it. One forward, please. What we found is a lot of lymphocytes arranged around the smaller vessels in the vasculature in the lung. So that's interesting, because that's not a hallmark of diffuse alveolar damage or ARDS in other patients. So we started looking into that. Forward, please. So this is a three D electro microscopy scan, the same thing that I just showed you, fibrin deposition and obviously activated lymphocytes, but more forward, please. We tried to compare that to other pulmonary diseases, and we looked into swine flu cases of the flu, very aggressive variant, very close to what we originally, or not we, but what physicians saw in nineteen eighteen, nineteen ninety. And it might look the same, but the composition, especially in COVID, is totally different from what you see, for example, swine flu patients. Forward, please. Not to discuss genes, but we could show that the molecular regulation in COVID nineteen lung involvement is totally different from the flu. Remember, that was what everybody was comparing that to. Yes, forward, please. And what we also found that thrombosis is a key factor in COVID nineteen. These wonderful pink arrows actually show you microthrombi. So not only do you have impairment of the diffusion capacity of the lung, but you also have occlusion of the vessels. And when you move forward, please. We were the first to really demonstrate that microthrombi were about nine times as prevalent in COVID nineteen as opposed to what we see in other diseases, that's diseases, patients who succumbed, not controls. Forward, please. And we were able to show another thing, and that is, if you look at panel A, that's a cast preparation of the alveolar capillaries. This is what it should look like, and B is what you see in COVID. Even if you're not a lung specialist, you don't want that. And if you look in panel C, you see this little donut-shaped indentation in the lung. One forward, please. And that actually translates to an indirect sign of interceptive angiogenesis. That's a highly dynamic process of novel formation of vesicles, which we actually only know from very aggressive cancers and the development of, for example, embryos and fetuses. So basically speaking, capillaries by the incorporation of endothelial progenitor progenitor cells duplicate into two. And as I said, fast process only takes minutes, as opposed to sprouting angiogenesis, what you see on the right-hand side. That's formation of new vessels from already existing vessels, and that takes like days to weeks. So why is that? One forward, please. Well, it is that the excessive blood clotting, the massive endothelial vascular damage, and then the dismantled repair attempts by interceptive angiogenesis is really what's killing the patient. One forward, please. And that's some original manuscript, original figure in the New England Journal manuscript, because like six months before COVID hit us, Max Ackerman or research groups and I could really show that interceptive angiogenesis is tightly linked to fibrosis pulmonary diseases. So originally, we said in our manuscript, you know, we think that patients who live through COVID nineteen are danger of developing something that will follow on like fibrotic modeling. We didn't call it long COVID at that time. And because it might induce some political stir, it was actually cut out of the original manuscript. But I think it was sort of tongue-in-cheek that that figure remained in place. So we could actually now say, well, we, we told you like two and a half years ago. One forward, please. And unfortunately, moving forward, we could then demonstrate that also on a molecular level, that's patient with COVID nineteen, week one and two weeks after infection. And as you can see, like, this is like really significant pulmonary involvement, but all the genes who actually modify and produce are involved in the production of extracellular matrix are fully differentially regulated upon like two weeks and following. And one forward, please. And then if you plot that one forward, you can actually see that fibrosis is really going up. But it didn't stop there. We did our very tentative X-ray, X-ray contrast tomography experiments, a paraffin, that's like tiny samples, not whole, like, not what Peter and Claire everybody showed you, but if you would move on forward, please. We actually need so thoughts more at the time. That's why we really looked into paraffin blocks, because we figured that would be a good way to look into a disputed entity, COVID hearts. One forward, please. And what I can show you now is, forward, please, especially from the works from the folks at Daisy, one forward, please. This is the three D reconstructed sample of a patient who succumbed to COVID nineteen involvement of the heart. And here, due to Synchrotron, we could for the very first time actually show this intralumina pillar, which is the hallmark of interceptive angiogenesis. And a couple of steps forward, please. When you actually plot that using, one forward, please. And using advanced image recognition software, you can actually show like this is a control heart on the left-hand side, top and the top, and the right-hand side, that's vascular modeling, COVID nineteen hearts, exactly what I showed you in the lung. So pulmonary involvement of COVID nineteen is not just that, it's a systemic disease. One forward, please. And then we did our best to move that into the third dimension, like when Max and I actually started collaborating like more than ten years ago. This was sort of name of the game, you know, these funny glasses, if you move forward. That's us actually taking our first, first glimpse at the third dimension, and one forward, please. That's actually my boss, Professor Krymer, former boss, Professor Krymer, you know, also being a little bit intrigued. But that's of course neither here nor there. One forward. Because then, starting working with Synchrotron, this is Petra Three at the Hamburg side, one forward, please. And that's obviously Paul with the COVID nineteen lung and the COVID nineteen brain. And now we are getting there, getting somewhere, because assessing whole undamaged organ is really what research in COVID nineteen should be all about. One forward, please. And it demands a heck of a lot of data. That's Claire again, taking care of that and pulling the massive amounts of work that are needed to that after the image of the primary data has been collected. One forward, please. And I mean, the, the resolution is just astounding. If you, I mean, Peter already showed you that. But the level of clarity we now get, especially in the lung, is just unheard of, that has never been reached before. One forward, please. Oh, that now would be a wonderful, wonderful animation of a COVID nineteen lung, skipping that. But it brought us not only onto the, sorry, yeah, until the new, sorry. Oh, come on, National Geographic Magazine, but also this is of the magazine that every German physician receives. COVID, we brought COVID nineteen and Synchrotron imaging into that. So, you know, as an application, another method, which is, which is going to really change. So, you know, as an application, another method, which is, which is going to really change in medical science, even your general practitioner in Germany is now aware of it. One forward, please. And one of the things that came out of that, that's Max Ackermann receiving the highest award of the German Society of Pathology, the Rudolf Virchow Award for his work and our contributed work to the combination and holistic analysis based on Synchrotron and molecular pathology. Forward, please. And the thing is, it doesn't stop there. COVID-19, yes, that was sort of our door opener. But if you move forward one step, please. One further. If you take a look at that kidney, I think it's a brilliant presentation because what it shows you is that you can do hip city-based histology and conventional histology. It pretty much, it looks the same. So we can do non-destructive work in order to access whole organs on a whole new level. Like we didn't really pry, or we pried open the door into a new field of medical science. One forward, please. Going to skip that because Peter already showed you. One forward. Thank you. But just to give you an idea, the central nervous system in hip CT and 3D reconstruction, on the right-hand side, that's not cut, that's 3D reconstructed without actually having to damage the whole organ. One forward, please. And the degree to which you can access, for example, minute capillaries is just astounding. One forward. I mean, the human spleen is not a very, how would you say, showy and attractive organ, right? But again, what you see on the top right-hand corner, that's not cut open. That's artificially reconstructed. One forward, please. And if you sort of get all the inflammatory cells in that kidney, sorry, in that spleen, out of that, out of the picture, what you really see is just the vasculature. And to the best of my knowledge, that even this has never been done before. So every picture tells us a new story and every part of anatomy is just wholly new. One forward. And this is something which Max and I are extremely interested, looking into prostate and prostate cancer because it's the most prevalent cancer in men and third frequent cause of death in cancer, out of all cancer death in males. So one forward, please. Assessing that by histology takes, like working it up and assessing it takes hours and hours. But by Synchrotron, moving forward, please, we can assess the whole prostate in a never-yet-decerned level and one forward, please. And even look at calcifications and minute changes to the urethra, as I said, unheard of. And by doing that, one forward, please. It's actually allows non-destructive analysis of surgical specimens. One forward. We can do standardized assessment of target lesions like size, closes surgical margins like we've never done before. One forward. It's extremely efficient, not to forget that. And it allows for guided sampling, it reduces the conventional workload. One forward, please. And really is a synopsis of digital molecular work up low for the very first time modern medicine for a really holistic approach. And that's all due to our cooperation, collaboration and Synchrotron. And the hub idea, of course. One forward, please. And, but it all started with autopsies and it all started with the first registers, like the German COVID registry, in which Max and I are very actively involved. Because at the end, out of this horrible pandemic, something very positive came. One forward, please. And this has been possible because, as I've said before, by active collaboration by lots of partners across borders and without inhibitions and without restraints. So please excuse the impairment of my presentation and thank you very much for your attention.
Great. Thank you very much, Danny, for an amazing job showing and really making the most of the technique that could have just been a technique. You've transformed into something that's actually helping us better understand our bodies. Claire, you're now on for doing a short quiz. We're going to make everyone work and I'm going to hand over to Claire to do that.
Hi, everybody. So I'm just launching a little poll there. So we've got just a couple of these polls to help us gauge interest in things like this. So this is just the first one, if people can just, it's just kind of a warm-up poll. So everyone gets going and we make sure the polls work.
So has everyone seen a poll and able to vote?
Yes, I can see the answers all coming in.
Yes, I can.
Super, that's 100%.
No, we have a couple of no's.
That's good, so good. Fantastic. Okay, I think we can probably close that poll and go back to the presentation. Peter, we've got to have a couple more of these coming up.
Okay, great. So thank you so much for that overall introduction that we've had from both Emma and also Danny and Claire on the technique. What I'd really like to do now is give some ideas of the hub. So in fact, we've been running a hub without calling it a hub for the last two and a half years. And what we'd like to do is really now expand it. Having had the experience, it's a huge amount of work. We're quite lucky in that the CZI, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, has given us some underpinning funding, which will help set things up. But what we'd like to do is go through and remind you first of all those specific goals. The first one is this biomedical challenge. Then it's correlation across the scales. Translation to the clinic and really impacting 3D histology, the idea that Danny showed. Enabling groups worldwide to use hip CT. Claire made it look easy. It's actually not simplest thing to do. There's a lot of work still to automate it, get the pipelines all running. And then finally is to put everything, all the results in open access. So how are we going to do that? Well, what we've done is put together a pipeline. And what we've really liked to do is get your input into this pipeline. Tell us hopefully that huge amounts of it have already been done with other data sets so that we can really make jumps for the hub quickly. But I'll go step by step through these different areas. And the each area that I'm going to talk about, we're also setting up a working group. So we're hoping that there'll be a working group in each area, open to all, that will bring in the best people to solve the problems in each step of the process. The first step, of course, is setting the biological and biomedical challenges. Danny, Max, many of the people we've worked with, every other Tuesday, we meet a group of at least 20 of us from around the world virtually and discuss what sort of biological challenges we should tackle, how we plan those experiments, how we can analyze them, how we can make the most of them. We need to open that up into a hub and bring everyone together to make the most of that. The second step, of course, is finding appropriate samples and learning how to prepare them. Paul really spearheaded the preparation technique, but that preparation needs to also be matched with any correlative imaging techniques that we use. So there's still lots of work. We also then have to do the scans themselves. Very fortunately, we have an LTP that's existing, still running for a short time more, which will continue to develop the actual technique itself, which won't be part of the hub, but will be underneath the hub, making the technique always better. The third step is that correlative imaging. So because we deal with the whole organ, we sort of see MRI as the first step or a clinical CT. Hip CT is the second step, then going through for optical clearing, electron microscopy, all sorts of other techniques, as Danny showed, doing single cell genomics and all perhaps even spatial transcript phonemics. Once we've done that, we need to go through and do the next step, which is picking that big data, handling that, putting it up on cloud, which is a huge task, analyzing it, segmenting it and using it for modeling so that we can actually go through, do it. And of course, we don't want to just have that impact there. We want to do the next thing, which is train new users. And so to train other people how to do the process. And that's all the way from organ selection, preparation to final analysis. Finally, we need to disseminate the results. We started some initial collaborations. We've been working, had interest from over 50 groups around the world. We're engaged heavily with about 30 groups. But we want to carry on translating, making an impact and disseminated in the clinic, for medical training and other ways to impact on society. So we'd love to know your ideas. I've just shown some here. And we think that will quickly overload. Showed you that even if we do a scan at 20 microns, absolutely automated, fully roboticized, the maximum number of actual organs you could scan is realistically on the order of 50 to 100 a year. And that's with funding that we've received from the CZI to refurbish a large lab to prepare the organs in. To take it beyond that, it's going to propagate to other facilities and into laboratories techniques as well. So we'd love to work with different groups to go through and do that. So all of that is a step eight dissemination, translation and impact on society. Well, the final thing is, are we actually doing the right thing? So in the discussion at the end, we hope you'll tell us, is this right? Or other science types, we need to do other partner types, the best people we should be working with or tools that already exist. So please give us your input. With that, I'm going to hand back to Claire for the second poll. Actually, second and third.
Okay, so yeah, question, so we're into question two. So there's two questions in this one. You can have a look. So the first is, what category of expertise do you think you fall into? You can choose more than one. I should have had none of the above as well, sorry. And then there's another question down below it. And this is just to kind of gauge how people currently work and what they work with. It's what side of imaging data, if at all, do you typically work with at the moment? Wow, everyone's filling in.
Sorry, I'm just looking quizzical because I thought as a host I could vote, but it's locked me out. I'll still get to vote.
Never mind.
Great. It looks like we have a really excellent overall balance of people from the medical, biological, Synchrotron, quite a number, sample preparation, lots of expertise there. Really, I think one of the most difficult things and one of the areas for sure is that data infrastructure. So people who have found good data infrastructure, groups to work with, please email us and tell us and share, share what you're doing. We were just speaking with the e-brains group earlier today and trying to share knowledge across that. Thanks very much for that, Claire. Oh, so I'm now going to go through and continue on with the description of the actual. Oh, do you want to do the second poll, Claire? Yeah, okay, great. Sorry, third one. So the next thing is the types of ways you can engage and how to engage. We set up with two things. One is a member and as Emma said, members need to completely share everything. Share results, share methods, share resource. We also need you to contribute your expertise and the expertise should be complementary. We also need resource. Currently, we're funding three people directly from ESRF and we have another two people permanently based there to try and actually do all of the preparation, run the actual experiments, do the reconstruction. That needs funding. So I hope that everyone will put in funds who wants to join as a member. And there's also, of course, the act of engagement and governance, seeking this funding, organizing, running, training and disseminating the overall knowledge. We then have a second category collaborator, which we expect to have hundreds. People who want to use the data, use the actual whole hip CT overall technique, but contributing just in specific areas rather than across the whole broad spectrum and don't want to share everything internally in that inner core hub. No matter what, anyone who uses the hip CT technique, we'd really appreciate that you put all your results into the HOA by doing that. And we only ask after first publication. ESRF has a maximum embargo of three years. So you get that publication out as soon as possible, get the data in there. If you want to put the data earlier, great. We'd also hope that you'd acknowledge the ESRF hub and the number of the funders, including the CZI. So what, for all that work, does a hub provide members? Well, beam time. Beam time, which we're proposing to split into two things. Biomedical challenges, where we have a really focused set of samples, where we have three to nine shifts, that's one to three days of beam time. And it can be multiple beam times for it to going through. So you can come back with again and again to really try and solve a grand challenge in biomedical area. We're also hoping to run feasibility and training sessions, which are really three shifts to that. We're bringing people or just bringing organs and produce feasibility so you can go and put together proposals. It also, as a hub, provides a team, all sharing expertise, hardware, software, data with appropriate groups to that, subgroups of the team, clubbing together and putting in proposals. Because there's no funding from ESRF, really the chance is to go through and form the networks, do amazing work. This really works for partners so far. We've been doing work that independently we could not have done. It really has been greater than the sum of the parts. And so we've also been successful in getting funding from quite a number of areas as well to try and not just help produce the results, but analyze them and interpret them. And so we really hope that by working together, we'll be able to go through and really investigate key biomedical challenges, do things like AI for segmentation and just really put your ideas here. We've also put it into a simple table. I know the rule is never to show a table inside of a presentation. But I think it's quite important to know that as a member, you are going through and ideally it's complementary knowledge that you bring something new to the inner group as a collaborator that's not required. We don't require you to participate in governance of collaborator, but if you're a member, yes, you need to. You need to seek funding and help organize the training and disseminate the overall knowledge to other groups, even if they're not core members, even if they're just collaborators and just helping. And really to go through, and another big thing is that we're doing this division is that members can lead a biomedical challenge. Non-members of collaborators can lead feasibility and training studies. Just for setting realistic expectations, this isn't going to happen overnight. The overall proposal, we have a draft written. We're really hoping to get feedback from everyone here on ideas. The submission date is January 15th. We'll hear about it in June. We'll then put out a first user call in September. Well, hopefully, we've, as I mentioned, received funding from the CZI to convert a large laboratory at ESRF to producing or preparing organs that will have that finished and ready by January and will have first users up and running. And there's been a huge amount of work at ESRF to optimize the reconstruction pipeline and automate it. And hopefully from that, we'll go from our current 20 organs per year up to 50 and then to 100. Back to you, Claire.
Hi, so on to our last poll. So this last poll is really people who are, you know, and are really interested. It's for us to gauge that timeline and how much past due we might need. So if you're interested in using hip CT or the data, within what time scale do you think you would be ready to wanting to use it? Oh, people are very quick on the responses. Thank you. And just from the point of view of people who think you might have organs, organs ready as well and would want to do that. Oh, there's an echo. I think that might be Peter. For people who think they might be organs ready, the caveat to also think about is that obviously if they're human organs, we have to think about the ethics considerations. And if people have questions on that, we can talk about that in the discussion. But that's obviously a factor. If you're not already set up for one of the central hubs from where we organize organ transport, that's a part that has to be factored in.
Great, thank you, everyone. That's an amazing sort of overall balance of both people who are ready to go. And as Claire said, France in particular requires transport organs for, for human organs, transport ethics, I should say. And so it does take time going through. Do at the end contact us because, as I mentioned, we have an LTP existing and we're happy to try, if possible, sitting in feasibility studies, giving you the data to start actually analyzing, processing. Not today because Paul's shutting down BM18 to put in a rotation stage that will be large enough to take an entire donor body, which we'll talk about a little bit later for our far future hopes. So with that, let's get on to that. We talked about our vision that we have for the next really three years, which is really to create a human organ atlas and health, disease and aging. But we're not stopping there. We've got this long-term vision. And actually, we want to really create a Google Earth of the human body. We want to be able to not just have a 2D view of the outside of the body. We want to be able to not just have a two D view of the outside of the body, but to be able to zoom down all the way down to the micron level in the entire human body. And hopefully we'll excite some view into that vision as well to try and go through and do that where we can actually have an inner universe of the human body to explore. And we think that's absolutely possible scientifically. We also need to get the ethics, which is going to be a little, take a little bit longer. But we don't always stop there. We don't want to stop with just looking at static organs or a static donor body. But we want to capture dynamics. In fact, we've already looked at balloon angioplasty inside of both pig and human hearts. They'll catch the motion going through and then use D V C to resolve down to, we hope, we haven't done it yet, down to the hundreds of nanometers accuracy displacements. And we want to extend hip C T, not with the same resolution, but in vivo. Ethics and health and safety will probably prevent human application, but going through and get some in vivo results. And finally, we really would like, as Max was talking about with the prostate, with Danny was talking about the prostate, to use Synchrotron images to calibrate longitudinal studies going through and correlate that to data banks. So this data bank, such as the UK BioBank, which has been tracking volunteers for thirty years. It'd be amazing if, when they do die and donate their body to science, that we can go through and do incredibly high resolution imaging of it and other techniques as well of testing. And then correlate that to that longitudinal medical records over the past thirty years that would provide an amazing database to mine with A I. And of course, as already mentioned, we'd love to translate this to other facilities, laboratory and the technique. With that, I've been talking for long enough. And we'd really like to go through and start the panel and open the.